All right, so now if you didn't know anything about Lynn County, that video surely has answered all your questions. Okay, so I have the results in my hand of those individuals who won a seat on the newly expanded Lynn County Board of Supervisors. And the first supervisor hails from Jefferson, and that is Elizabeth Buckheim. All right, you won, congrats. The second is also from Jefferson. The West Side's really, really crushing it right now. It's Juliette Boalier. Congratulations. All right, now we've got a Washington warrior, Mr. Matthew Hale. Now we've got the outer communities creeping in on us. From Lynnmar, Kevin Drehos. From Lynnmar again, Arsha Vedadi. And from College Community, Mr. Chavi Parks.
Congratulations to all of you. Please raise your right hand. I state your name to solemnly swear
I will faithfully execute
that I will faithfully execute the office of Lynn County Supervisor
the office of Lynn County Supervisor
to the best of my ability in accordance with
to the best of my ability in accordance with
the Constitution of the State of Iowa
the Constitution of the State of Iowa
the ordinances of Lynn County, Iowa and the rules of the Cedar Rapids School District for the next hour or so. Take your seats, congratulations.
We'll call this mock meeting of the Lynn County Board of Supervisors to order. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on the agenda, please make sure your green lights are on your microphone so you can be heard. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is the time for the public to address the board on topics on today's agenda. Is there any public comment?
Good afternoon, Board. I am Jim Hauser, and I live down in the northwest side of Cedar Rapids around Ellis Boulevard. My address is 700. And I'm here to ask for you to abate my property taxes on my flood-impacted home. My house is unlivable. I lost my job, and I resolved the flood. I had to max out my credit cards in order to maintain my life, and the damages of my home have far exceeded its value for repair. Now to add insult to injury, I just received in the mail my property tax bill, and I don't have any ability to pay those taxes. And I would respectfully ask that you abate my property taxes on my home, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Any other public comment?
My name is Ben Rogers, and I live at the fictitious address of 222 Indian Hills Court on the northeast side of Cedar Rapids. I feel very sad for that gentleman, and I can't imagine what it's like to lose their home and max out their credit cards and not know how they're going to make ends meet. But you have a very important decision in front of you that shouldn't be an emotional decision. It should be based on policy and what's best for all taxpayers. The way property taxes work is you're paying for a house that was valued last year. So he lived in a house that received services. He had his roads plowed, police drove on his street, city water went into his faucets, and he's now paying the taxes on a house that he already lived in that was standing back in March, for which he's being taxed and for which he'll be taxed in September. It's not fair to the rest of the taxpayers that you abate and give and let their taxes go for a house that was standing, that is taxed. You better be fair to the rest of us who have paid our taxes and who did have flood insurance and for, you know, homes and services that we're still paying for. It's a tragedy, but you're going to be setting a precedent. And that precedent will cost hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, and that means that services could be denied and cut in other places. And so while that gentleman's story is certainly tragic, he lived in that house, that house was standing, it received services, and he should pay the taxes on a house from a year ago. I could certainly understand next year that his taxes will look very different for a home that may not even be standing up. So is it fair to zero out someone's taxes when the rest of us have to pay? That's what your decision will be today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Is there any other public comment?
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Bert Dahmer. I live at 852 964th Street. And do you want to hear? I'm here to speak about Green Acres. Is this the right time to do it, or should I do it when you have that agenda item?
This is your time to speak, sir.
Well, thank you. Now, my problem isn't as big as Mr. Hauser's who's flooded, and I'm sorry for him, but I do have a problem, and it's Green Acres. When me and my family and our neighbors moved out there 15 years ago, it was a nice, quiet neighborhood, and that's why we moved out here. And now Green Acres wants to bring these pigs and cows and horses, and I don't know what next. Is it roosters that are going to crow at 6 o'clock in the morning? It's not fair, and I hope that you don't allow that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
My name is Stacy Walker, and I'm a resident of Marion, and I own a business that was flood-impacted. And my heart goes out to Mr. Hauser as well. I can't imagine being in that situation where you lose everything and maxing out credit cards and, you know, and then all of a sudden the county's asking you to pay property taxes for a home you'll probably never live in again. So I really do feel bad for that gentleman. But, you know, I'm just here to kind of get an idea of where the county stands with businesses, because my businesses was impacted, but fortunately I had flood insurance, and our business is going to be able to relocate. We're going to lose a little bit of money during the relocation, but overall, we're going to be fine. And I just want, I just kind of want to hear what your plan is for business owners. I know a lot of us weren't so fortunate, but I'm just looking for consistency. I thought when, you know, we voted and elected you, you were here to make policy and to enforce it. And so I'm just kind of curious to know, to see what kind of action you take, but I just ask that you be considerate of this business community. We are the backbone of this economy, and I'd ask, I respectfully ask for you to keep that in mind when you're making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Is there any other public comment? Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the consent agenda. Did we get a consent agenda? I need a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda by Drehos.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, state nay. Do we approve the consent agenda? Do we have any minutes to approve this morning's minutes? We didn't make it. Okay, we'll skip the minutes. Next item on the agenda is discuss and decide on business license for Green Acres Animal Is there anybody to bring that to the board? There is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, my apologies, Les Beck with Lynn County Planning and Development.
Thank you.
This is a request by the Olivers for a business license for Green Acres Animal Sanctuary. They're operating, currently operating as a nonprofit organization out of their property, which is 10 acres in size. The issues in front of you are that the property is zoned residential, which limits the number of animals that can be kept on this property to no more than four. They currently have 25 animals on the property, but they are operating, again, as a nonprofit animal sanctuary whose purpose is to care and nurse at-risk animals back to health from dangerous situations. So again, the issues in front of you have to do with granting a business license to allow what is obviously, you know, a very worthwhile effort for the animal sanctuary, but at this point exceeds the allowable number of animals on the property.
Thank you, Director Beck. You all, I believe, have received a packet of information and are well briefed on this situation. Okay, are there any additional questions you might have for Director Beck?
Director?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. So they're illegally having this farm, right? Because they don't have the correct permit?
Currently, right? Right now, they are operating their animal sanctuary without the proper permits. That's why they're in front of you today.
And you said illegal in the briefing, or whatever you want to call it?
Well, it would be considered illegal currently, yes, because they do not have the required permits. But again, that's why they're in front of you today.
And how long were they operating without the property?
It's been, they purchased the property a year ago, so it's been less than a year. It took them a little bit of time to get the operation up and running.
And they had the incorrect amount of farm animals allowed, right?
I'm sorry?
And they had the incorrect amount of farm animals, right?
Correct. They are in, the number of animals on the property exceeds the allowable limit.
Any additional questions?
Were they previously aware that they were not allowed to have that amount of animals?
They have told me that they were unaware of the restriction on the number of animals or of the requirement to get a business permit to operate this. So if the board grants the business permit, it will, in essence, make this operation legal.
Was this issue brought about from a complaint or just knowledge of the community?
It came about through a complaint, yes.
Okay, no more questions for Director Beck?
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve a business license for Green Acres Animal Sanctuary.
Motion to approve the business license for Green Acres by Drehos.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion between board members? If not, we'll take it to vote. All in favor of granting license, state aye. All in favor, opposed to a license, state nay.
Nay.
Thank you very much. Hey, I do have to take a timeout here and mention that the comments that have been made by elected officials are not necessarily their own comments, that they've been scripted. Because it is an election year. Next item on the agenda, discuss and decide on abatement or refund in whole or in part the taxes of any person whose buildings have been destroyed by fire or other unavoidable casualty if that property has not been sold for taxes or if the taxes have not been delinquent for 30 days at the time of the destruction.
Good afternoon, Steve Tucker, Lynn County Finance Director.
Dawn Gendrich, Lynn County Budget Director.
Good afternoon.
The board tasked us with exploring tax abatements, which we did, and we're coming here to give you a report on where we are with that for a decision on whether the board would like to abate taxes. There's two items, and if the board decides to abate taxes, the second item is how to do so. The PowerPoint presentation that you have does stipulate the Iowa Code 445 6.62 that allows the county to abate taxes for floods. So what we did, Dawn and I did, we, as the board asked, we put a committee together of representatives from the cities affected by the flood, the Cedar Rapids School system, and we had a meeting where we talked about, talked about tax abatement and whether we should do it or what the mechanics would be, how we should do that. We met, and we reviewed what the actual tax authority is and be reminded that this is a county board of supervisors' decision, but it does affect the other taxing bodies. They had input, but they cannot make, be part of the decision on this. We estimated the valuation loss. We looked at the potential impact on county tax revenue, discussed the impact on paying property taxes to citizens and businesses. We talked about what taxes to abate, what the definition of damage is, whether it's full damage, partial damage, or whatever. Dawn's going to talk about the estimated loss to the county and some recommendations on if you decide to abate taxes, how we would do so.
Isn't that the next agenda?
Yeah.
Well, I'll just go over the tax abatement situation if the board should choose to do that. Of course, you'll have to, if you decide to abate taxes, you'll have to decide on a process on who qualifies and how much to abate. But assuming you abated 100% of all flood-affected parcels, the county will lose $850,000 in general fund revenues this next fiscal year. So we'll have a few choices in doing that. We can take the $850,000 and do hiring freezes and layoffs or cut programs, but if we want to reduce non-mandated programs, we're probably going to have to do layoffs. And there is a handout we've provided that shows if you were to allocate the $850,000 across the board, the impact on each department. In most departments, that means you will see at least a half-time person cut, most likely. Another option, if you don't want to deal with the budget cuts, would be to make up the shortfall in the following budget year when we levy taxes. And that would mean we need to levy an additional $850,000 over and above our normal tax levy to help cover the deficit created by these abatements.
Okay. You've all been briefed. Any questions for Mr. Tucker?
I have a question really quick. So it looks like the biggest cuts will be coming, or actually going, to the Lynn County Correctional Services. Do you have any information on exactly how many layoffs or exactly how much this will affect their services?
That would be equal to about two deputies.
We put the discuss and decide, it's got some parameters in there as to how you want to proceed, so.
Is it your expectation that we would take three votes under this agenda item? One for level of relief, one for class, property class to abate, and thirdly, area to abate?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask, permission, I want to ask, can I ask the sheriff, the major, Doug, I don't know his last name, to come up, ask questions?
Is Major Reniker here? Is it related to this tax abatement issue?
Yeah.
Doug Reniker from the sheriff's office.
So we talked a little earlier about the fact that you would have to, that there's two approaches you could have in terms of where you take the money out. It is, it's a medication, what is it called again?
Narcan.
And then the other is you would have to lay off staff, correct?
Correct. We'd be looking at two staff members.
And you consider these cuts coming from essential services?
I think that, I'm not sure I would say essential services. I think that we are in a little bit of a dilemma when we try to cut $175,000 out of our budget. We're really looking at our core services that we're providing and trying to keep those intact and additional areas that we're providing service.
You're talking about, I can't remember, that you would probably let, release?
Low-level offenders.
Low-level offenders. So, and you talked about how you make a risk assessment. Have you ever, has the sheriff's department ever gotten a risk assessment wrong?
We've never released people within our custody on low-level offenders like this before. So like I stated earlier, I mean, we rely on this risk assessment, but additionally, we rely on the information that we have available to us. Part of that is the person's behavior while they've been in our custody, as well as their past criminal activity or history. So can I say with certainty we're always going to get this right? No, I can't. But I think based off the information that we have available to us, we're proceeding in the right direction.
And people could die without the medication, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Hale, to answer your question, there's two action items here. The second one's contingent on the first one. If you approve the first action as it's written, that would make the second action a proper estimate of what the loss to the county would be. If you change the first action in any way, change the level of destruction or who's going to be affected by this, then the second motion, or the second item would have to be adjusted and looked at a second time.
So what were your assumptions to arrive at the number that's in the next agenda item?
The assumption was full abatement for the affected property.
Full abatement, okay. And not partial?
Correct. Correct.
And that's how you want us to vote? Or that's how we'd like to see it?
We were asked to bring this issue forward and let the board vote however they saw
So I have another question really quick here, if that's all right. So your department has identified this as, you know, a doable, not extremely, how do I want to say it, extremely hurtful decision. Is that correct, that you think this is?
Our financial recommendation would be not to abate taxes because the county's already in a precarious financial situation after losing the $3 million in inmate revenue. However, we are aware that there are issues other than financial involved here, so we are prepared to offer alternatives to mitigate the damage done by losing that kind of money.
Thank you.
I still need a little bit of input, because the item that we're asked to vote on right now says discuss and decide on abatement or refund in whole or in part. Are those not two separate issues?
They are. That's, we put this as a discuss and decide simply for this meeting. Normally, we'd have a discuss one day and a discuss and decide the next. So what we did was put all the options in here, and you can decide, discuss what you want to keep in and what you don't.
Okay. What's the board think? Speak amongst yourselves. I'll entertain a, I'll entertain a motion.
May I say something real quick?
Sure.
I think we, of course, sympathize with those affected, but these cuts will hit essential services to people in the county, and, you know, one role that county government has, one big one they have, is public safety, and that will be obviously affected, as the major put it.
Okay. Any other comment?
No, Matthew, well, I do agree in that a lot of those services are definitely beneficial. After putting some thought into weighing our options as far as either completely abating taxes or not, I think that's something that we should also try to keep in mind is the public's reaction to possibly not abating any of their taxes. I think that could potentially drive away some of our community and leave us maybe not as well-standing as we hope to be in such a situation like this.
There's no other discussion. I'll entertain a motion to abate all taxes of any person whose buildings have been unavoidably damaged.
Second by Drehos.
I need a motion.
Or you need a motion. Motion to vote on abating taxes by Drehos.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion among the board? All in favor of abatement, state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote nay.
Nay.
Is anybody counting these votes for me?
Yeah, I was going to say, can we, can we call for a division?
It's three and three.
Is it?
Yeah. The chair has an opportunity to vote in this. And although, although I am sympathetic, the case for non-abatement made by Supervisor Hale is, has caused me to vote to not abate tax refunds. So that motion dies, no abatement. Next item on the agenda, is it necessary?
No, it wouldn't be.
Does anybody want to talk about it, just in case?
Any?
You voted the wrong way.
This is a hard group, and I believe the next item on the agenda is probably not up for discussion or decision either.
Chair was supposed to vote to abate.
Should I call for a revote?
No. We had two decisions here that have reflected actual decisions that the board of supervisors made in the past. I don't believe that any of the current supervisors or any of our student visitors are aware of what the decision was. We tried not to make that aware to you. So if Les is still here, Les, could you explain how the board dealt with the Green Acres Animal Shelter?
The board granted a, what we call a temporary use permit for the Green Acres Animal Shelter, which essentially allowed them to do one public event per month over the summer months. So they have eight public events scheduled. So we handled it under what we call a temporary use permit. We placed conditions on that permit that required that they provide adequate sanitation facilities, that they provide traffic control to direct traffic into their property, and so we tried to, you know, address as many of those impacts as we felt we could through this.
Okay. Surprised to hear that? Next item, the property tax abatement. Dawn, can you speak to that? Or Steve, wherever Steve is.
The board did decide after the flood to abate property taxes for those flood-affected properties. Letters went out to all of the residents within those areas. They had to certify that their property was significantly flood-damaged. I think there was a lot of trust that went into that whole process. And then the amount of loss to the county, the board decided, instead of making cuts to the budget, to continue throughout that fiscal year, and then when we built the budget for the next year, to take into account that loss. As far as, I think we did adjust the property tax levy up a little bit at the time, but that was following a pretty significant reduction the year before, so that worked for us. And the over $3 million that we lost in inmate revenue that had our general fund at a much lower level than it should have been, the public passed a local option sales tax measure that gave the county about that amount of money to restore our fund balance. And then the sheriff's office, at the time, Major Reniker was very active in that, was actively trying to get inmates back into county jail, and they actually came back faster than what was expected. We had We had the, the whole facility up and running much more quickly than was projected, so our revenues were better than we had hoped. So we were able to get back to the desired fund balance level within the targeted time.
Great. Thank you. I hope you three can sleep tonight. Legislative update, I expect we don't have any. I expect there to be some public comment. This is the time for the public to address items pertaining to board business. Please feel free to take the podium.
Ben Rogers, speaking as a Lynn County Supervisor. I, I just want to say that it was an absolute delight to actually watch deliberations from the perspective of the audience. It gave me a different perspective of how we are viewed from sitting up there. And John just really talked about, these are exactly the kinds of issues that we faced in 2009 when Supervisor Olson and I, he was the gentleman sitting where Matthew is sitting, we came in, in 2009. Those were the very discussions we had to have. I don't even think we really figured out where the bathrooms were yet in our new offices or our temporary offices, and we were having to make those kinds of very important decisions with people coming in saying, I'm, I have no more money, I'm living with family, I've maxed out everything, the house I lived in was passed down from my family, so, and the mortgage was paid off, so it didn't require by law, flood insurance, I can't even rebuild a house because when I'm going to get back, you can't build a house for what my house is worth. And we really had to weigh what is good public policy, what makes sense by the numbers, and very similar to what the gentleman said about public perception. And that is oftentimes the things that collide, is people coming in with situations that sometimes fall outside of what makes really good, neat, clean policy. And you have to make those decisions based on less than long-term information. Sometimes it's just what you know to be true today. I thought the questions that were asked here were stellar and would be the kind of questions I would hope I would even think to ask in these meetings. This is exactly what I had hoped, and so Supervisor Walker, I truly appreciate you spearheading this and all the staff that, time that have gone into organizing this. It was really fun to watch how you guys were going to vote. And we often do have votes that come down to one or two people hearing something that changes their mind. And sometimes public policy is directed by a handful of people who come to our meetings, not a lot of people come to our meetings, and advocate for a certain issue that's important to them. And so we have staff that guide us, but we're also elected officials, and we, we all, you know, we have to stand for reelection. We have to face the people that sometimes we make hard decisions about. And one of the best pieces of advice I ever got when I started was, don't try and make everybody happy. You're going to fail doing it and make them more upset. And so that's where you find this balance of what is good public policy, but what does it also mean to be empathetic? And sometimes you really, I, I have really struggled with those because the decisions impact people no matter what. So thank you for allowing us to view your deliberations. It was really educational for me. Thank you.
Any other public comment? John Harris speaking as a Lynn County Supervisor. I had, this is the best day I've had in quite a long time. I had a lot of fun. Thank you all for making this day real. We had high hopes when Stacy and, and staff started planning this, and it couldn't have turned out, I don't think, in my opinion, any better than it has. So thank you very much. I want our supervisors to know that you still have about 15 minutes to be a supervisor. And there, like Ben said, sometimes there's no wrong answer. There's just an answer. And sometimes you don't know whether you've made a good decision or not. It could take years before you know that something that you did in, in 2018 was really, is really a good thing to do. Or sometimes you look back and you say, jeez, I wish I would have done that differently. But I think you know that even today, that trying to make a decision that affects people's lives is not a trivial thing. And, and like I said, I have great faith in the future of Lynn County because I've met some of the young leaders of Lynn County. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.